Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes. No, we can't.
Okay. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kristalyn. Erin already gave me a nice introduction. So I'm a resource conservationist with the Columbia Soil and Water Conservation District. And we have, my agency has been partnering with the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership to do this water quality sampling over the last five years or so. And then we also, on the call today, we also, we have Sneha from Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership, and I believe Sarah is here as well. And then we also have Andy Magi, who's the new council coordinator for the Scappus Bay Watershed Council. Hi, Sarah. Hi, Andy. And so we are gonna let, we're gonna kick it off with Elsef doing a brief presentation on the findings from the water quality, water quality monitoring program over the last five years with a focus on the E. coli results. We're gonna touch on the other stuff real briefly, just so you have an idea of what all they've been looking at in the water. But we're gonna, we're gonna have a focus on E. coli, and I think this will give you guys a better idea about the history of the program and what the results sort of indicate and what that might mean for next steps. So I'm gonna let Sneha take it away now, and then we can have questions and discussion time after the question.
Thanks, Kristalyn. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Do you mind giving me the opportunity to share my screen? We have a presentation here.
JC, can you go ahead and do that for her?
Yes, I just granted permissions.
Thank you.
Perfect. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Yes.
So as I said before, my name is Neha Rao, and I'm working at the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership as a research scientist. Today, I'll be talking about the E. coli bacteria trends that we observed as part of our larger water quality monitoring program in the Columbia County. We have been, as Erin and Kristalyn both said, this is a much abbreviated presentation from the previous presentation we gave last year. And my colleague Sarah Kidd is also present on the call today to help answer any of the questions that you all may have. The, before we go into the results itself, I'll be talking a little bit about how this water quality monitoring program came into inception. The watershed that we are mainly concerned about, what the other monitoring parameters were. And I'll summarize the general trends that we saw and concluded by making some small recommendations of what the next steps could be before handing this talk back to Kristalyn, Erin, and Andy. Now, Kristalyn and Erin both did a great job talking a little bit about the program. As they said, this was started in 2017 by the Columbia County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. It was initially funded by Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. But since then, it's been partially funded by the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board as well as the Soil and Water Conservation District. We are currently in the fifth year of monitoring, and the overall goal was to acquire nearly 10 years of data, 10 years of water quality data, so that we could help inform some of the restoration actions, any riparian management, as well as the need for any long-term monitoring goals. Now, this program builds on a previous monitoring effort that was taken up by the Scappus Bay Watershed Council, who have remained an important project partner for us. They concentrated their water quality monitoring efforts towards the Scappus Bay watershed, that is areas of Milton Creek, North Scappus Creek, and the South Scappus Creek. In 2017, when we worked, when we established this program, we expanded sampling to the larger Clatscanai River watershed, as well as the Beaver Creek watershed. Currently, we have 13 monitoring locations across all five watersheds. Now, while we have a lot of information available about all of the different watersheds of monitoring, we are particularly concerned with the Milton Creek watershed, and I'd like to talk a little bit about what this watershed is all about. It has an area of about 20,000 acres, and majority of it is forested. It has 13% of pastures and agricultural land, and the lower half, lower 9% of it is developed. As part of our current effort, we have two monitoring locations represented by these pink dots. One of them is in the upper reaches, while the other one is in the lower reaches or the more developed area. The lower sampling location is actually close to a public park. These green dots represent locations that were monitored as part of the previous Scappus Bay watershed effort. Now, we'll go into some of the metrics. We do have quite a large suite that we monitor. We started off with temperature that we measure year-round. We also collect yearly monthly samples for turbidity. And in this slide, I just want to show you the DEQ regulatory standards that we use as thresholds to monitor and to compare our results to as part of this program. But since we're concentrating on E. coli, I would like to show you the E. coli standards. We have quite a rigorous monitoring program across the, across these watersheds. And the reason we do that is so that we can identify sites that are consistently high in terms of E. coli throughout the monitoring period, and also identify areas where there are single events of high E. coli levels. Now, we've been talking about E. coli for such a long time, but what exactly is E. coli? It is a type of fecal coliform bacteria which is most commonly found in human and animal waste. The presence of this in streams can be an indicator of stream impairment. And some potential sources of E. coli can be agricultural runoff, septic tank leakages, and wastewater overflows. I've divided the results based on watershed. And in the first slide, I'd like to draw your attention to this map here. This is essentially the locations where we have monitored bacteria along the Clatscanai River watershed. And from the bottom right corner, as we move up the map, we are actually moving down the rivershed. So the first three locations, Little Clatscanai, Upper Clatscanai, and Parkus Creek are considered the upper reaches. Middle Clatscanai is the central reach, and the lower Clatscanai is the lowest point of the watershed. And as you can see, when we move through the watershed into the lower areas, we have elevated levels, we can see the E. coli levels increasing. The next graph here shows the seasonal variation of E. coli in the watershed throughout the monitoring years. And as you can see, that when we approach the warmer months, we do see a kick in the E. coli levels. Most of my next slides will show the different watersheds and a similar representation. Next is the Beaver Creek watershed, which is adjacent to the Clatscanai River watershed. We have two monitoring locations in this watershed. One is an upper location, which is called the Upper Beaver. And the next one is the lower watershed location, which is Lower Beaver. And from our study, we saw consistently high E. coli levels during the summer of, during the summertime in Upper Beaver. And we did find occurrences of elevated summertime E. coli in the lower reach as well. Next, we move on to Milton Creek watershed. We again had two monitoring locations. One is in the upper reaches, the more agricultural area, and one is in the lower reach, which is more developed, next to a public park. And in this watershed, we have seen consistently high E. coli levels during the summertime throughout this entire, through both our locations. And as I mentioned before, we did have data available to us from the previous effort that was conducted between 2008 and 2011. And I've shown the values over here. And as, and from our comparisons, we have noticed a general upward trend between the two years of comparison. Moving on to the North Scappus Creek watershed, we see similar, similar trends here as well. We see high E. coli, consistently high E. coli levels in the, in the lower watersheds, and occurrences of, of E. coli, high E. coli in the upper watersheds. And from, and these levels have consistently increased from the 2008 monitoring effort. It's the similar case in terms of the South Scappus Creek watershed as well. Through this, this monitoring program, we have established that the lower reaches are a lot more intensive in the E. coli levels, and it's similar even in this watershed. Now, while we have been able to see as a graphical representation what exactly the E. coli is doing in the watershed, I wanna show you how the sites look and why this is such a cause of concern. As you can see, this is an example of the Clatscanai River watershed. The sites that we monitor look very pristine, and they're beautiful locations. However, as we move down the, as I've said, when we move down the watershed to the more populated areas, we do see E. coli being an issue during the summertime. Additionally, we have seen temperature issues in the middle and the lower reaches in the Clatscanai watershed. Similarly, even the Beaver Creek watershed, we've seen turbidity issues with E. coli in the upper reaches, while in the lower reaches, we see temperature issues. Since we have similar trends across the Scappus Bay watershed, I've clubbed these, these general trends together. When we move to the more populated areas of the watershed, we have, we not only see E. coli issues, we also see elevated temperature issues in the summertime. We also see added turbidity issues when it comes to the Milton Creek watershed. Now, as we have spoken about all of these issues, there can be a reason of how come these things are occurring. And we anticipate that these E. coli issues can be because of septic tank issues or there can be agricultural runoff that is finding their ways into these streams. And some recommendations that we make is that firstly, we might need to place informative signs in public areas about this information that we have found, and to increase riparian buffers so that some of the agricultural runoff can be captured in, in those forms. We also see the need for a focused bacteria study that has a higher sampling frequency, as well as having more sampling locations, especially in the sub-basins. With this, I'd like to transfer the, open the floor for discussion, and I'll give the presentation back to Erin and Kristalyn and Andy. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to take them, or we can open the floor up for discussion.
Sneha, thank you for that presentation. This is Henry Kaimiller. Hey, I have a question on the Milton watershed. Is the McNulty Creek inside of that as well?
We didn't monitor that as part of this monitoring effort. We have stayed on the main tributary stream, but I do believe that in 2008, it was monitored.
Yeah, it seems like it had high E. coli and has had for many years. I wasn't sure if that was part of the monitoring here or not.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we asked for the, for the sampling frequency and the program to be expanded to include these sub-basins as well, because we, we have established that there is E. coli issues going on, but we need to now find potential sources. And we can, we'll be able to do that if the program is, is expanded to include these areas.
So how long would you expect that kind of work to take? It seems like, I mean, some of it seems like a little bit of common sense. You know, if you're up in the, up in the mountains and there's no houses around, and the, and the numbers are low, and as you get to where there's more houses, the numbers increase. And as you get, you know, down to where you're just about ready to dump into the river, and the numbers are, are really, really high, obviously, it's picking up more and more bacteria as the water flows through, and as it goes to residential area, it kind of leads a person to believe that septic is, is a big problem. Is, is that the case, and how much more testing do you need to do in order to figure that out?
So, this is quite an interesting question. Now, in terms of E. coli, and we have, we already, we've been monitoring this for quite a while, and we know that this is, this is already a problem. For us to be able to, or for the county to be able to take these actionable steps, we do have a working group that is trying to identify these problems. And I believe Kristalyn and Erin and Andy are part of this working group, and they can obviously speak more about what they would need in terms of expanding this program.
Okay, and thank you. One final question for you, and your slides were very comprehensive. But I, a question that I had on your, on your slide that showed summertime levels increasing, you know, not just the temperature, but the amount of E. coli in the summertime. I was wondering, is that affected because in the wintertime, when there's higher water levels and more rain and more runoff, that the percentages are lower simply because of dilution?
That could be one of the reasons, sure.
I think that, I'm just gonna chime in here. This is Sarah Kidd with Elsef. I'm also helping on the program. I wanted to say that in the winter, we do think dilution with storm events is helping, but also, we do get occurrences of high E. coli during that time as well. And so it's not necessarily a silver bullet for dealing with those issues. Also, we don't necessarily see a direct one-to-one with E. coli levels being higher during hot times, although we do generally see that trend. It's just a little bit more complicated of a story sadly. And I wanted to address your question about being able to identify sources of E. coli. One of the issues with trying to trace E. coli as a source is that a lot of, you know, as Sneha really did a good job presenting, you know, we have very few monitoring locations. And so when we have done some sort, we have done a few instances where we've kind of blitzed the areas trying to find a source, we end up seeing just really high levels all over. And so then being able to be like, being able to include more long-term stats and trends monitoring of that will help us identify, okay, is this an ag source? Or maybe it's a septic based on those sub-basins and other data that the group has been trying to collect. Thank you.
Thank you on that. And, and as, you know, a person who spent a good part of his childhood in both of the Scappus Creeks, and either fishing, swimming, or one thing or the other, how different is it today, or was there any testing even done back in those days? Because it seems to me that, that even though we have more houses and more septic systems and all of that kind of thing, back in, you know, say 50 years ago, there was also a lot more just sewage being dumped and inappropriate septic systems and all that other kind of thing. Do you think that this, these E. coli numbers are worse today than they were, say, 20 years ago or 30 years ago?
I mean, honestly, to say 20 or 30 years ago, I, it's hard to say. They, as far as I know, there wasn't sampling back then. But as Sneha presented, you know, just between that 2008, 2011 study to now, we have seen an increase, a clear increase. And so I'm not sure what's driving that. I feel like it might be a combination of septic linking and agricultural use. My guess is that it probably has continued to become worse just because of population density, both with agricultural land development and, you know, maybe septic starting to fail.
Okay, thank you.
If I can jump in there real quick, I think also, you know, just to build off of what Sarah just said, that, you know, our, our current permitting instructor for septic systems actually started in 1974. And while, you know, there was a period of time before that, maybe five years or so, where the health department, you know, was looking at that, I, I think that, and actually issuing permits for septic systems. I mean, I think that without jumping to any conclusions, one could say that there's a possibility that a number of septic systems along these tributaries could just be old. And, and I mean, treatment processes have changed considerably over the last 50 years, really, you know, getting at this sort of pollution concern and the public health concern that comes with these sort of things. And so I, I think that you could sort of theorize that, you know, things could increase, and that's what the, at least the recent data shows. But, you know, some of this definitely could be, you know, being impacted by old systems that maybe are substandard and aren't treating sewage to the level that it should be treated when, when properties or structures are located this close to a water body.
Thank you, Erin. Commissioner McGruder and Garrett.
Um, I, I think, Henry, that when you say 20 to 30 years ago that you were swimming in the creek, maybe, maybe it was a little longer ago than that. I'm, I'm figuring it was 60 years ago that I was spending more time in the Columbia River, and that was long before all of the, the, the changes were made. One, one hesitates to think about what we were swimming in back then. But this is so exciting to me because of my work with the Watershed Council, but also, and my, my board membership on the Estuary Partnership. But because I am in the midst of this community water forum, and I will get to publicly say that, Andy, thank you for responding to the invitation. Erin and Kristalyn, I'm, I'm waiting for your, your responses. Because this is, this is going to be part of what, what we're working on, not just, you know, drinking water, but, but water all over the county. So this is, this is really exciting. A couple of things that I would point out is the impact of tidal influence on a couple of those sites makes a difference. The Columbia River impacts the Lower Clatscanai and probably Scappus Bay as far as the, the tests are concerned. Have you done anything, or do you plan to do anything, on differentiating between human and animal? Because I, there is testing available for that, but I'm guessing it's pretty expensive. So that's my question.
Yeah, we currently don't do that because, like you said, it is quite expensive. And the goal of it was to establish whether there are E. coli in the, in the streams, and we, we've pretty much done that now. That could be one of the next steps for either this program or the program that you're heading.
Yeah, I also want to chime in and say that the, we selected the sites in this current monitoring effort that were least impacted by tidal flow. So we try, while we do call them lower locations, they are as low as we felt comfortable going without having a significant backwater influence from the Columbia. And so we would actually like to add lower, even lower locations, where we could kind of see what that influence from the Columbia looks like.
And I think the, the $10 million that the city of Clatscanai is getting for their sewage treatment plant may help some of the impacts there, since they sometimes have some serious flows that go in from their, their sewage treatment plant. Thank you.
So I just wanna, I just wanna add to that, too. We could, we have discussed as a partnership, expanding the water sampling to include further investigation of trying to determine the source of the E. coli. But like you mentioned, Margaret, it's expensive and a lot more time-consuming. So right now, we're sort of at the limits of what we can do with just our agencies. So with the Soil and Water Conservation District and the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership, the SWCD puts in cash towards this grant every year, and the Estuary Partnership does a lot of the legwork and some resources on their own. But if we were to try to add a lot to some new components to the program or some new sites, we would need to look at how we can bring in some additional funds to do that. And so that is one of the things we're sort of putting to the commissioners today. Is, is this something that the county might be interested in to be able to expand it and, and dive deeper into some of these issues? We're also attempting to do sort of a, an investigation on Milton Creek as a way of trying to understand what's happening in more of these watersheds. And so to that end, we've been talking about other things we could do, and we've been working with the city of St. Helens to do some, some mapping, to do some overlays of where the septic systems are. And we have a little bit of information about age and tax lot size and proximity to the creek and soils. And so all of this is really useful information. But in order to do like a larger study that would maybe actually yield some specific information about where it's coming from and what it's coming from is gonna be a much larger undertaking.
Absolutely, and the county has invested $25,000 in this community water forum to work with everybody to identify those gaps and find additional funding. So I'll look forward to, to Erin and Chris responding favorably.
I, I definitely will. I was honestly just waiting for this meeting to transpire first before I responded to your email, because it came at such a, it's such a perfect timing, right before our meeting. So I figured we would be discussing this today. And I am curious as to how you see that, this, this, how you see the forum and this information, this group, the water quality sampling, sort of, how do you see those two things relate, relating? And then I, I was wondering if we could, if we're allowed to ask, who else is invited to participate in the community forum? Whether they be just, just landowners or other, other partners or agencies in the county? I'm just curious.
I will send you the list, Chris.
Thank you. I as well plan to respond to you, Margaret. Just like Kristalyn said, we just, we kind of felt like all of this was coming to a nexus. And, and we weren't really sure, you know, because we've already started taking some steps on a smaller subgroup to really think about this, you know, Milton Creek focus area, and what does that look like? And can we start to sort of pin down a methodology or a plan that will work for other stuff? But yeah, we were really waiting for this discussion to happen. But I think we're both very interested in participating in that, that larger effort.
Commissioner Garrett, just one, one moment, hang on. Commissioner Garrett has been trying to get a word in there twice. Let's give him a floor.
Sorry, Casey.
Hey, that's all right. I just, two questions. One, have, have there been any reported sicknesses from E. coli? Or has, has that correlated with the increase in E. coli since 2008 or since you guys have been gathering data?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and take this. I have been speaking with my director, Mike Paul, who is the director of the Public Health Program. And we don't have anything per se that, that ties somebody getting sick directly to these streams. But the thing to keep in mind on that is that usually the reporting around E. coli is really inconsistent. And a lot of times, when you're sick with E. coli, you're presenting symptoms that can be associated with a lot of other things. And so, you know, when somebody's presenting, or like a group of people presenting with, with situations, you know, then definitely there's public health steps that are taken to try and trace that back. But, you know, nothing like an outbreak has come up. And really, it, it depends on the fact that, that having somebody who is experiencing symptoms and sick, that they're actually going to a doctor, they're confirming what they're sick with, and then they're actually trying to trace that back and share that information with us. and then they're actually trying to trace that back and share that information with us. So even though we don't really have something saying, yes, this is happening and people are getting sick, I think we can make a pretty strong assumption because these bacteria are there that the possibility definitely exists. And we may just not know about it because of the way these things are investigated and reported.
Okay, um, second one, you mentioned, um, potentially in increasing the riparian zones. What's the process for that? Is the, is that something that has, I'm assuming go through a process and get approvals to do? And, but can you talk a little bit more about that? Kristalyn maybe, or who, who would be the best to answer that question?
Yes, I, I can talk about that. Um, Andy can talk about that. So there's increasing riparian buffers just means, um, having wider vegetated areas around the streams. And so, um, like I know in the county, that is supposed to be a fifty-foot minimum. I'm pretty sure that's standard throughout the county. Uh, and, and so sometimes that's happening and, and sometimes it's not. And so in terms of, you know, what's required, obviously changing, changing that would, would come down to, uh, local jurisdictions. If you were to modify your ordinance now, wider riparian buffers are always better. Fifty-foot is not terrible, but I think the larger question is, um, are those buffers actually being met consistently? Obviously that's usually better in the upper watershed areas than it is in the lower watershed, where there's more development, um, more roads, um, more houses, more business, uh, more agriculture. So that's just, that's just a measure that it can always be used to improve water quality. And so the great thing about, about improving riparian buffers is that it not only, um, is a good measure for dealing with E. coli, but it, it is also beneficial in terms of dealing with, um, turbidity, sediment entering the stream, um, mercury entering the stream. Uh, and I think we all know there's, uh, mercury's become an issue in this part of the county as well. So that's something else I kind of wanted to bring up today, uh, is we have, uh, local agencies working on TMDL implementation plans for mercury for the Scapoose Bay watershed area. Um, and so that's just something else to think about. These things, uh, are going to continue to, um, like we're, with the discovery of high E. coli levels exceeding the thresholds, we're probably looking at a TMDL for bacteria in the somewhat near future from DEQ. Um, I would not be surprised to see temperature, uh, as well as some other parameters for which we are not, not, our streams are not meeting these parameters anymore. So looking down the line, um, and this is definitely something we can talk about in the community water forum. I think we definitely will talk about it. We've got some pretty big water quality issues that we're going to need to address, but there are some things that we can do that are beneficial for mitigating against a lot of those things. Um, and riparian plantings and improving riparian buffers is always top of the list. It's pretty much the easiest thing to do. So, um, this is where having a place to talk about water quality and quantity issues, we believe is really important. And that was something we wanted to bring up today. Uh, is, is getting all of the right partners together at a table to revisit these issues on a somewhat regular basis and develop something, something like an action plan, um, so that we can move forward with prioritizing projects and figuring out resources so that we can address these, be proactive about these things, um, instead of reactive.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I'm glad that you're talking about mitigation factors and being proactive. I, I always am a little concerned when, uh, you know, we, we hear, um, that there's been studies done. Let's just go back as far as two thousand eight and, um, on the McNulty Creek piece. And then we, we tend to study things and study things and study things. And then we tend to forget, uh, to try to figure out a way to start eating the elephant one bite at a time to actually fix the problem. And so we get lots and lots of data and then that data gets old and, and, um, and we really don't come up sometimes with a way of actually, uh, you know, taking care of said problems. So, um, I sure want that piece of the conversation to be in there too. And I think it's important to note that, um, uh, you know, the county definitely wants to be a partner in this through public health and otherwise. So, um, you go back to that mercury thing, uh, Kristalyn, what you said, you, you, you mentioned that and, and kind of in passing. But, uh, what's the, what's the cause of that? Is that something new or different? Or, or is that something we've been living with forever?
So that's, uh, a little above my pay grade. And mercury has always been here and in the atmosphere and in the soil, as far as I understand it. But it's, I think what's happening is it's the way that it's, that we, um, it's development and potentially climate change that are changing, uh, the, where we're finding mercury and how much mercury we're finding in the water. So when it comes to, uh, water quality parameters, um, DEQ has established certain thresholds for all of these different, um, we'll call them pollutants, I guess, although they're, they're natural to some, some of them are natural to some degree. That when they exceed the threshold, then they inhibit one of the beneficial uses of the water. And so for the, um, Willamette River, which is connected to the Multnomah Channel, which is how the Scapoose Bay watershed gets wrapped into this mercury TMDL because it drains to the Multnomah Channel, just connected to the Willamette River. Uh, the level of mercury that they're finding in fish tissue is too high for safe human consumption. And so now maybe they're required to take, to take measures to reduce that number so that people can consume fish coming out of this basin. So that, that's a really long, a long explanation. But, um, the main, the main thing to know about mercury is that it, it seems to have everything to do with, um, sediment entering the stream. And so where we have a lot of erosion, um, then we have that happening more. And so basically, um, there's, there's several different things to work on. But the, one of the biggest things is, um, working on how we, how we, uh, keep mercury in the ground instead of in, eroding into the water. So that there's, there's, uh, TMDL implementation plans being created by both the city of Scapoose and St. Helens and the county because they're all, um, land managing agencies within that watershed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, Erin, anything further here?
Uh, yeah, um, I, we were going to have Andy, um, with the, the Scapoose Bay watershed chime in a little bit. And we kind of, you know, have touched on maybe a lot of the things that we, you know, just kind of really want to, you know, uh, go through with you guys. So I am going to turn it over to Andy, just in case there's anything else that we want to sort of catch on this. But I think you can see, especially just after what Kristalyn was saying about the TMDL, that you, you definitely have this thing happening where, you know, the county has a really like strong role to play in these. Cause, you know, a lot of these come back to public health or regulatory or development type processes. And so for us, you know, and you just indicated that, you know, the county wants to be a partnership in, in these things. And so, you know, these are definitely things where we all need to be working on this together and on the same page. But yeah, Andy, if you want to go ahead and jump in and, and, and sort of bring anything else to the forefront that we wanted to talk with the commissioners.
Yeah. So hi, everyone. I'm Andy Magi. I'm the newish coordinator at Scapoose Bay Watershed Council. Um, I'm very excited to be here in Columbia County. And, um, my family, when we moved from Illinois twenty-five years ago, Columbia County and Scapoose is actually where we landed. So I've been away for a little bit, but I'm really excited to be back, uh, to the place my family's called home for well over two decades. I think, uh, like Kristalyn and Erin and Sarah and Snaha have done a really good job, I think, of bringing a lot of the things that the forefront. I think just some highlights that I want to come back to is, is one. As Kristalyn pointed out and others have pointed out, a lot of the issues where we're specifically here to really kind of hone in on E. coli, turbidity, temperature, mercury, all of these things are related. Do it. Cement and what's coming off of our lands into our streams. And that intersection between the, the riparian areas and the stream banks. And so the good news is is as well, we're facing, I think, a lot of issues, um, to the quality of our, of our streams and, and water quality. The solution, the solutions are all fairly similar, right? Making sure we have those buffers, making sure we're managing those buffers, uh, in, in, in really using best practices, um, to make sure that those streams are, and stream buffers and riparian areas are performing the functions that those streams have performed for hundreds of years, protecting erosion, managing flooding, um, all those benefits. And I think in terms of the partnership, the, the smaller group that you've heard about partnering with the county, the commissioner, Hi Mueller, you, you mentioned how are we making sure we're not just collecting data, but we're finding actionable things? I think one of the things that I want to make clear that's a resource, um, for the county, for all the partners on the phone is Scapoose Bay Watershed Council has done a lot of that work, finding where the particular troubled areas are within our watershed. So we know where the stream banks need work. We know where the buffers aren't right enough or protected enough. And so we have some places to start where we really start identifying where issues are coming from and arising. Where are the places we want to get to first to actually sort of put in some restoration activities and work? Um, and then I think just the final couple of things that, that I, you know, so broadly speaking, I think we have a lot of good information, both what LSEP is bringing, both what we're bringing to the table. Um, and now's the time to get together, really understand what those issues are and really put together a strategy and a plan for the county and the region to, to address those things and actually take meaningful action, uh, to improve the quality of our streams, both for, you know, fish and wildlife, but also for, you know, the people that have lived here. I, hearing the stories of people playing in the streams for, for generations, I think is, is very important. And, um, so it's about place, it's about our, our local water. And one thing that hasn't come up today, you know, in Oregon right now, outdoor recreation is, you know, a nine-point-three-billion-dollar industry. And I think, you know, Columbia County, me ensuring our water quality is high and people have access to outdoor recreation here is, is a economic development conversation as, as well for the area. So, um, there's a lot in this conversation. Short version is, we're here to help. We are excited about the partnerships. We're excited about the group that, uh, Commissioner McGruder is pulling together. We're excited to continue to work with partners that are here on the call today. And we're here to be a resource, uh, for everybody. And if they're, they're term to be helpful with the E. coli conversation, or helping think through strategies and things like that, we're happy to do that.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, questions, uh, Commissioner Garrett or McGruder?
Let's just get to work. I'll look forward to all of seeing all of you on Thursday, March seventeenth at ten AM on the movies here.
Margaret, I just, I just want to ask one more question if that's all right.
Certainly.
So we, so there were sort of two, two, two main points, I guess, here today. One is the sort of the short-term potential public health issue. Um, our agencies want to partner with public health in the county to do whatever we can to ensure that there's, that there's proper measures taken to ensure public safe, safety and health around our waters, where we know that, that we have higher than, than safe E. coli levels, even though we don't totally know why or where they're coming from yet. And so we just wanted to make sure we had the support of the commissioners to talk to people about that and that you would be aware of that because probably the amount of testing that is being done right now is not sufficient to support public health messaging at this point. And so that might be something that comes up in the future. Like LSEP and the SWCD cannot go out on a daily basis and take water samples to have them tested. But that might be what's needed if there's going to be signage or public awareness about high E. coli levels in places that may not be super safe to recreate in. And so I just wanted to mention that, uh, and, um, that, that, yeah. And then there was the, the long-term sort of goal of water quality, um, monitoring and sampling and how that fits in with the, the goals of the county and the other local, uh, local agencies. And we just want to be a part of the long-term, uh, future planning. Uh, and maybe, and I, so I, so Margaret, I'm really excited about your water community forum because it sounds like this is going to be the place to voice these concerns and to put together a strong partnership around water quality and quantity in the county. Because I think we, we are experiencing population growth and expansion. Uh, and these issues are, are just going to become more, more pressing. So we'd like to get ahead of it. Um, and a strong partnership means access to, uh, more funds and opportunities. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking for.
I think that it's important too, uh, Erin, and maybe this is a conversation that we need to, uh, bring, um, uh, Mike Paul into, to see what resources may be available for these testing opportunities through, um, the state, uh, through our public health department and, and maybe outreach for, um, some additional funds, uh, there as well, so that we could tie all this together.
Yeah, I think that's going to be really critical, um, because the funding over the years, you know, I've been with the county for fourteen years and we originally, um, had a groundwater protection committee that was really, you know, talking about quantity and quality issues, you know, within the last fifteen years. And, and a barrier that kept coming up in that process and our ability to move forward with it was funding. And so that really is, you know, part of this commitment. And again, what Kristalyn said, I, I think that we're going to be discussing that and looking at, looking at that and have the ability through the, the water, um, forum that, you know, Commissioner McGruder is heading. But I do think that those are important conversations to have with Mike Paul. Um, and, and about, you know, how the county and the public health department budgets for some of this stuff. Because this is, this is work that needs to be ongoing, um, so that we can inform decisions and actually not just end up, like you said, with a bunch of data that sits there, but that we can actually start working with and engaging with property owners and doing outreach and doing other things, to move this along and sort of bring everybody into the fold and get our, our, you know, our watersheds and our, our streams in a much better situation.
Well, I think that we probably should have that conversation sooner than later because it would not surprise me, but, but some work like this, uh, could fall under the Biden administration's infrastructure plan that's coming out of, uh, Congress and, and all of that. And, you know, just be able to tap into some federal dollars that may not be pandemic-specific, but overall public health, uh, specific. And, and I know that there are some pockets of money in that, in that plan that, um, it would not surprise me but what this wouldn't fit right into.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. And, and the most important thing is that we continue this data set, right? That has been going on for the last five years, but that we just build off of it. Because anytime it comes to, you know, issues like this, you know, having something that is a good foundation to build off of is extremely important. So I agree with you that we really need to have those conversations now. And that's something that I can work with Mike Paul and, um, and the commissioners to, to make sure that we're talking about that and actively trying to problem solve for that. Cause that's, you know, we need to be a partner in this, um, because it affects all of us.
Commissioner Hi Mueller, and that's the beauty of having the Association of Oregon Counties being the catalyst for this working group or this, uh, the community water forum as they also can bring to us those funding opportunities that we might be able to take advantage of.
Exactly. Okay. If there's no other questions or other points, um, we'll go ahead and thank you all for participating and bringing this information to us. And, and, and we'll appreciate you guys participating with our water forum under Commissioner McGruder's leadership. And, um, uh, and, and don't, uh, don't be strangers. Let's talk about this more often so that we can really, um, you know, we can all be kept up to speed on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
And, and thank you, Erin. Um, and we'll move on to Nancy Merlett to, to bring us up to speed on some credit card fees.